I'd like to call the May 23rd study session to order. And can we have the roll call, City Clerk?
The record will show that all members are present except for Mayor Protem Rosansky, who is excused.
Okay. Can -- the first item on our agenda is clarifications of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Curry, do you have anything that...
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Selich?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Nichols?
I have things.
Okay. Can you enlighten us?
Please, I will. I had a question with regard to five. I didn't -- in the property tax agreement with the county, have they agreed to what we're -- or are we just adopting this amendment?
They have agreed to it.
Okay. Well, I'm pleased. Sounds like you did a good negotiation there. Okay, number eight. Oh, that's okay. Forget number eight. I didn't under -- well, I did understand a little bit, but I'd like to have a little explanation on 10 and 11. And I can -- we can do it here, or we can do it later. 10 is the seashore homes. And I think you're saying that the side yard concrete is too high in what he did, but I'm...
That rock -- he had a six-inch encroachment, and I think he came out three feet. Yes, he came right out to the property line, and so it's right at the edge of the bike trail. So it's a potential hazard.
Is the property laying back a curb there?
Yes. That's his setback area.
So the red that you had marked on, kind of on this pavement or something, that was the edge of his property line, right? And there's a foot setback from that that he should have been. But was he also too high in height?
No, the height was not an issue. The original contractor that did some work here installed those French doors and essentially had a projection that was about a foot out from the building.
Sure.
So essentially, it was, you know, the kind of the -- and a wrought iron rail. So essentially, they could open up the doors for ventilation, but they couldn't step out. What's there now is right against the bike trail.
So it's a three-foot -- I mean, three or...
Sure. Someone riding at the edge of that bike trail would catch a pedal or whatever on the edge of that.
Understand. Okay. The other one is number 11. I'd like a similar explanation. You're talking about he's cutting into the hillside next to Ocean to increase his driveway width after he's lost it because he took the encroachment on his house?
Mr. Mayor and Council, this item, some of you, I'm not sure who was on the council at the time, this came to the council previously and was, I guess there were several issues regarding height variance and some other things that were trying to happen at the time, and some modifications. And the issue of redoing all of the retaining wall work and such was really not raised at that time. And I think it was discussed previously with the property owner that doing an extensive enlargement of that driveway wasn't really appropriate in the public right of way.
You're speaking of, yeah, the retaining wall across from his residence that's in the public, that is the public right of way, is what you're speaking of, right?
Right. At one point in time, if you can look at the adjacent lot on the exhibit, you can see there's just a standard driveway width that runs down along. At some point, over time, either him or the previous owner had done an expansion of that area without an encroachment permit. And so what's there existing today does not have a permit. And what he wants to do is take that, what's existing today, and expand it even further.
Back into the...
Back into the hillside. And we just thought that that was probably a little bit too much.
And what you're saying is you issued him a permit for what he got away with so far.
Yeah, I -- my sense is that since the existing improvements have been there for some time, that it would be appropriate to give him a permit just for those improvements.
But that would then tie down how much he has because it'd be on maps and so forth.
Yes.
Okay. I think, yeah. All right. Yeah. I had the last one on 16 is this All Lloyd project. And I had a question how well it worked, but I guess they've said it works some. But isn't that Hooker, what happened on the Hooker here where we have to maintain those things for 23 years? Is that, or 10 years even? That seems like it's ridiculous. I don't think they're going to be used very long.
Well, you know, talking with Bob Stein as the project manager, I guess, you know, the tests with the smaller numbers have shown some promise, so the idea is to go for the full installation. If, obviously, the state is going to kick in a lot of money here, they're not going to want us to pull them out, you know, a couple of years down the road, especially if they do the job, or we're going to want to keep them longer than that.
But you're talking about running them for 10 years, right? Or having a mandatory 10 years. Now, that means we have to repair them and everything else during that time, right?
Councilmember, they have a 10-year warranty on all parts and labor. I share your skepticism about things lasting in the bay that long, but there is a 10-year warranty. We have had this additional conversations with the state over the provisions of the grant, which is not before you tonight. Tonight is just mitigated negative deck. But the provisions of the grant speak to a 20-year guarantee that they would stay in place. The state staff, state water board staff views this as a pilot project, and they've verbally told us that they would look at it as such and see if it wasn't working, allow us to pull it out at no penalty. We'll probably want to get that in writing in the grant form, which is not before you tonight. That comes next.
Okay. I -- my other question is typically if you put two of these things, one on either side of the channel almost, Dave, you're ending up having a stalemate. You've got to line them up on one side or line them up on the other side to get the flow to...
We had an engineering firm come in and do a full title analysis of the West Newport channels, and it's their analysis that resulted in the plan for the 15 or 16 of them. So they've projected that this will work.
And they came up with the locations for them?
They did. They came up with the locations and the number. And that's not to say we might not want to step back and scale the project in, start with a few. But again, the analysis says you have to have all of them working at once to make it effective.
No, I don't mean that, but if you don't sort of line them up so you get a one-way flow up the channel one side, down the other, you're just sort of dead-ended, and it does not work very well as far as circulation.
They certainly did that analysis, yes.
Thank you. I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else, or Councilmember Deggel?
Yes, I have some questions. I usually try to flush these things out beforehand, but all going on with the general plan and so on, been pretty hectic. I did have a question on item number three. And it's basically, we're going to provide continuity in water service, and so that when tenants leave, we don't disconnect and then reconnect, and that landlords would have the option through a $35 fee to have this seamless service. Couple of questions. Is that a one-time $35 fee? And secondly, why is it fee $35 instead of $20 or some other figure?
I believe it is a one-time fee.
Okay.
We would not charge that annually. And it was our estimate that would be the cost of processing the paperwork and everything. We normally not permitted to charge more than the cost to provide that service, so we just estimated it.
Great. Well, I think that's a wonderful convenience for our landlords. Makes a lot of sense. And then on number five, no, not number five. The, yes, number five on the property tax exchange agreement. If we can maybe find out what the basis agreement is, kind of the scope of the agreement, I think that'd be very helpful. That pertains to the transfer of monies between the city and the county for West Santa Ana Heights. And then also, I know what the council's been sensitive to is limitations on our land use authority through the pre-annexation agreement. And if this agreement touches on that at all, if that's a separate issue, and maybe you can let us know, Dave, how that would affect West Santa Ana Heights. Or Homer.
I think I can address a couple of those issues. It is a separate issue. This property tax exchange agreement is required by LAFCO.
Right.
As a part of the package for them to set the hearings and to consider our application for the annexation. And this tax exchange agreement just pertains to that portion of the property tax that is not subject to the redevelopment agency in terms of it isn't dealing with the property tax increment. When the agency was established in 1986, then the property tax basically was frozen, and the growth then would become the tax increment over the last 20 years. So that base was very small, and it only grows 2% a year by state law. So what we're talking about is that base after 20 years, and I think it's about $30,000, that the split would be basically about 50/50 between us and the county. So after the redevelopment agency goes away, it would be a different split. We'd get approximately 15% of the property tax.
Now, is that consistent with the kinds of agreements that are being done statewide with the counties and cities?
You know, I think it is different, you know, county to county.
Okay.
And it is not consistent with what we did on West Santa, I mean, East Santa Ana Heights. Actually, we got a better, we got the 70/30 split, but this is so little money that it really doesn't amount to very much.
And I understand it's less than 5% of the RDA fund? So it's less than a nickel on every dollar?
Yeah, actually, I did, if, I know you have a busy agenda tonight, but I did have a couple of slides, if you want to get into that tonight, about how in effect is Homer saying how little money we're talking about. Remember, this is the amount of money outside of redevelopment that is locked in at 1986 values. So it's a very, very small amount of money. As Homer mentioned, it's $30,000 split between the two of us, so we're talking about $15,000 roughly a year in property taxes. And to answer your second concern, you're noting that we did enter into an agreement with the county regarding land use and the specific plan. This is not, this does not include that discussion at all. The county may expect us to go and make a similar promise in the future, but this just has to do with the property tax exchange.
No, I understand part of that pre-annexation agreement was so that the city wouldn't rezone areas that would provide income or revenue to that redevelopment. Do you know what those properties are, looking at commercial properties that may not be present?
That's right. Typically, the county would look towards, in this case, to the Birch Street commercial strips. There isn't any commercial activity besides multifamily in West Santa Ana Heights, so I don't see them being overly concerned about that, but I wouldn't want to speak for them.
Okay, thanks.
I got one question. If we go ahead and approve this tax split, does that mean that we are locked into going through with the annexation? Let's see how I word this. I'm concerned about going through the annexation until we have the redevelopment agency issues resolved. And I want to make sure that the redevelopment agency and the annexation goes at the same time.
I think I understand your question, that this resolution itself does not commit us to do anything final associated with the annexation. It is a step in the process. You, your council at any time can end the steps and tell LAFCO you don't want to proceed with the annexation. As it's set today, our hearing is in July at LAFCO. A LAFCO would actually hold the hearing and begin the next clock, which is roughly a 45-day period for protest, and then they measure protest, then they have a reconsideration period. Even after protest is filed and after reconsideration, your council could say, timeout, we don't want to do this until, say, the redevelopment agency is addressed. So to answer your question, yes, you can stop at any time.
Dave, question?
Okay, the second, Dick, Councilmember Deggel?
No, no, it's on another item.
Okay. Councilmember Nichols?
But we didn't get the 70/30 then. We're back at a 50. That's what I...
That's right.
Okay. So we didn't do quite as well on Blake.
Well, just for, we had that discussion, Councilmember, just for, it's about a difference of $3,000 a year, and we didn't feel it was worth battling.
I just previously made a statement that was wrong, and I just wanted to make sure that I knew I was wrong.
But it is in the minutes.
That's okay.
Just kidding.
It never happened before.
Dave?
Councilmember Ridgeway?
If we have a LAFCO hearing in July, is it anticipated that, assuming all the, it's approved and the protest periods pass, that West Santa Ana Heights would be part of the city as of January 1?
We could set that as our effective date, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Deggel, you have one more?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Webb. Final question was on item, agenda item 14, and I was simply curious why we would want to have a, why we would view a wireless network as preferable to a T-1. Maybe if you can provide an explanation.
Jonathan was going to try to be here today, but he had another meeting, so I'll try to substitute. It's really a matter of speed. The T-1 lines do not provide the capacity any longer to meet our daily needs, passing water information back and forth between us and the utilities yard. So this, we investigated ways to solve that bottleneck, and this was the most cost-effective way we found. We are proposing to keep the T-1 line strictly as backup, and that cost is about $480 a month. We think it's money we'll spend for the redundancy.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ridgeway, do you have any items? Councilmember Rosansky, do you have any items?
None, thank you.
Good. All right. The next item on our agenda for the study session is budget review. Homer, would you fill us in on what you would propose to do for this? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last city council meeting and our first budget review, the city council heard an overview of the overall $191 million budget. You saw where the major sources of our revenues were coming from, where our major expenditures were coming from in a macro look. So what we normally do at the second meeting, and then we also finish that meeting by a presentation by Steve Batum on the CIP. So we concluded that, had some questions and discussion, and so what Steph is proposing today to start, walk through the budget department by department, not getting into a great deal of detail, but just giving general looks at the budget, what the departments do, and any new things that are being proposed to be budgeted, especially new positions, and detailing the proposal of why those new positions were added to this budget. But this is, you know, what we're going to end up with is certainly going to be the council's budget that you adopt, our second meeting in June. So it is your budget. What you're dealing with is just the straw man, but the charter says that the city manager provides to you in terms of my best professional recommendation on how to spend the city's money. So we will go through any exercise, or any explanation, or any amount of detail that it takes for you to feel comfortable with what budget that you finally adopt. And I also put in front of you today our supplemental list to date. We've had some questions from some of the city council people to say, okay, who has proposed what? So this is a combination of budget proposals for your consideration on the meeting that we normally adopt the budget, which would be the 27th of June. Some of these are outside requests from agencies or from special events or groups. Some of these came from the city council. Some of these requests are from previous years and would be additional years of funding, like the first one as far as the athletic complex at Estancia. So we're not really looking at walking through this, but I wanted to put it before you at this point in the budget review. This is our supplemental items that we have gleaned from outside groups and also that you have asked us to put on the list. And if you have any questions over any of these today, we'll do our best to answer them. We're just wanting to make sure that you don't look at the list, the 27th of June, and that's the first time you've seen it. So, you know, with a month to go in the budget process, this is where that list is.
Mayor Webb, I did have one question.
Sure.
Many of these are, come from council members, and it's my understanding that there's also been city council member requests that wouldn't be reflected in this list, but might be in other parts of our budget. Is that correct?
There were some requests certainly from council, I think, that ended up in the CIP. Well, I have my own list, but it's not, hasn't been put together, so I am aware of there are some projects that the council has raised. And I'll have to review Homer's list to see if our lists mesh.
Okay. It might be helpful for our council to receive that information as well.
Sure.
Unless, of course, Mayor Webb is putting more projects than District 4. That's my district, by the way.
You can challenge me. I'll come up with something for District 3.
This doesn't need to be a competition here. The list is already quite long. But if there aren't any further questions with that, we will go through the department by department. And we have three department heads that aren't going to be with us today, so we won't hear their presentations. We will hold off their presentations until our first meeting in June. Our city attorney underwent shoulder surgery last week, so she will be out for a couple of weeks, so we will give her an excuse. The police chief is not here, and also the planning director are not here. So what I'd like to do is take these presentations, and we have short PowerPoint presentations for you. Anytime during the presentation, feel free to ask any questions. We will discuss them just as long as you feel like you want to discuss them. But we will go through them as they are listed in your budget, and we will start off with the city council budget. Dave is usually the one who prepares the city council budget and the city manager budget, so he will sort us off.
Thank you, Homer. As you're aware, the city council has its own separate budget item, and this includes contracts that you typically directly administer. And you can see where the lion's share of this budget comes out of the so-called maintenance and operations, or M&amp;O account. And if you look at your budget line item specifically, that's the 80/80 account, which is professional and technical services, as well as we pay the city dues, memberships out of this account. For instance, the local Orange County Division of the League of Cities, the State League of Cities, we pay an annual LAFCO fee out of your account. Other things that are in there include a Chamber of Commerce membership. Our legislative advocacy contracts come out of this account, as well as the Balboa Island Museum was funded through here, some of our mailings, the Biloxi Katrina relief amount came here. So these are the kind of things that make up that proposed $1 million amount there on your far right in the M&amp;O section. Unless you had any specific questions about it.
I do.
Okay.
The salaries and benefits, can you, I mean, I know we're not getting paid $256,000, so where's that go?
Where does that come from? Dennis, can you help me there?
I'm glad to see we're taking a pay cut, though. I hope the rest of the city employees are looking at that.
We're all doing our part. No, if you look on page B2, or I can just talk to it, page B2 of the detail, council allowances, what is called is $97,530. Health dental vision is $69,000. Retirement insurance, $8,000.
I know, but I'm assuming that there's other employees that we're paying other than, this is just for seven council members?
Yes, that's correct.
We don't take any staff salaries out of your account.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you read the list again, then?
It's council allowances, health dental vision, a small amount for retiree insurance, life insurance, Medicare benefits, a small amount for per employee retirement.
Dennis, it's also Bob Burnham.
Ah. Ah. I was going to say, I'm not getting that kind of money. If I am, someone's dipping into my paycheck.
Thank you, Susan, there.
Bob Burnham was dipping into my paycheck. I knew it. I can't trust that guy.
So even though that's a contract, Dennis, that comes out, well, he's actually, comes out with an hourly amount.
The IRS says he's an employee even though he's in a contract.
I know, but why isn't that on the city attorney's budget?
Well, he's not, in most cases, he's not doing legal work. He's doing work associated with spheres for you as a council. So you could put it in the city attorney's account, but I think last year, I'll let Homer answer that.
Or we could put it in the city manager's budget to where it wouldn't make it...
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, he's doing legal work. I mean, he's giving us legal advice. He drafts legal documents. I don't think he's a paid lobbyist or anything like that.
He's not.
So...
We could certainly make that change.
So does that make up the entire amount between the $181,000 and the $256,000?
Yes, the amount for the council is $181,192, and the amount for the spheres issues is, yeah, $75,000.
Thank you. Dave, can you talk just a little bit about why the '05-'06 estimated as far as maintenance and operations was quite a bit larger than what is being proposed?
Well, there are different things that come up throughout the year. This is one of the most challenging budget items for me to manage because a lot of, because you, as a council, will come up with ideas that you think should be funded in mid-year. They can be one-time payments. So the difference between, the difference over those three years are different types of events, whether it's the Ensenada race that you may have done a one-time funding for, or last year, for instance, the Orange County Marathon is in there.
Is the Centennial in there?
Centennial separately, I believe. But for instance, you were doing a lot more of the spheres work here, so there was additional contracts associated with that than is proposed for this year. That should be ratcheting down.
Dave?
Yes.
On B6, it says spheres issues $400,000. That's more than $75,000, so what is the rest of that for?
We're, no, I'm seeing, I'm talking about the difference between, say, this year, this year, and this year.
I know, I'm back on my previous question on the difference between the 256 and the 181. You said that $75,000 was sphere issues, but here it's saying it's 400,000.
No, Bob is on top of that, I believe.
On top of the 400?
Yes.
Okay. What's the 400 going for then?
You know, we just, I put something in the budget not knowing what it would take in order to conclude the sphere issues, and I'm not sure what it's still going to take, but I wanted to make sure that we had something budgeted, that if we needed some kind of special service or some kind of specialty in order to help us with that, that it was budgeted and it was available.
Or anything else.
And when we talk about sphere issues, these are fundamentally airport-related issues and LAFCO issues and what else is...
Redevelopment agency.
Redevelopment.
All right. Any other questions about the city council side? Otherwise, I'll move to the city manager's budget.
Dave, I think City Clerk's next.
Oh, sorry. Move on. Levon, you ready?
My budget's really exciting. Basically, it's a status quo budget. There's no staffing changes proposed. However, I would point out that the biggest difference in my budget this year is my election budget compared to 2004. And this estimate's provided by the registrar of voters' office, and it's based on a cost of between $1.25 and $1.50 per registered voter, which is $83,055 to $99,666. That's based on a total of 60,404 registered voters with a 10% growth factor figured in. And of course, with the county, this is always subject to change because it's based on the number of jurisdictions that are involved. It's based on the number of items that you have on the ballot. And of course, with having six council seats, as well as probably at least two ballot initiatives, that will probably increase our cost. And then the county may also have some additional requirements from the Department of Justice for more language-qualified poll workers in targeted precincts. And so that's just a summary of the items that can affect the election cost. But it is basically doubled from 2004.
Look, Levon, can I just ask, what is the estimated cost to count petition signatures when they're turned in?
The cost is...
For initiative?
Well, it's $3.40 per signature. So the one that we just finished on debt initiative was 7,400 signatures, so...
Thank you. So, $25,000, $30,000?
And that's not included in this budget. That'll come back to you as a budget amendment out of this year's budget.
And then there's liable to be another one later.
And then it's, and green light, the green light petition is expected in on Tuesday, so that'll be verified at the same rate.
Thank you. All right. Does, do you have anything else on the city clerk's side?
No, I don't.
Council, have any questions on the city clerk? Can we go forward to the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city manager's budget is pretty much a status quo budget, at least for this year. And again, I'll speak to some of the things that come out of our professional and technical services account. We've handled most of the Marina Park consulting through this, including the relocation studies and the legal advice. We did some initial work for the Santa Ana Heights Community Center out of this, and the Newport Coast Assessment District Review. Those are the kind of things that go into that 1.2 million.
And in this budget, Dave, is only budgeted for half of his salary and benefits, and the rest of that comes out of the utility?
That's right. I'll speak briefly to the, just a reminder of the divisions that are under the city manager's office. Harbor Resources is in there, the Public Information Officer, and Code and Water Quality Enforcement because Sharon and I co-supervise that. Sharon from the code side, me from the water quality side. So these are within the salary and benefits of that division.
How many employees do water quality and how many do code enforcement, or do they share the responsibility?
They're all cross-trained, so they share.
Any other questions related to city manager's budget?
Just quickly, the, on the harbor resources, for instance, it shows almost 14 full-time employees.
Yeah. Remember, the parking lots are in harbor resources, so...
No, I'm more interested in the per employee cost. That's like about 150,000 employee or something? 140,000 employee?
Well, if my number's correct, that also is including, that's not just entirely their salary cost. Am I correct, Susan? That includes M&amp;O? It is salary. Total division for all 14.
That's what I'm saying. So it's about 140,000, 140,000 employee?
It's the operations also.
Right. I'm saying, is our salary benefits 140,000 employee?
Total compensation.
Two million by 14.
That's what's in our capital.
Thank you. It does.
It does.
Okay. So I'll give you just a taste of some of the positions that are in there. For instance, the parking lot...
I have no, I don't, I'm not concerned about the positions. I'm just curious as to 140,000 just seems like a lot for any position in harbor resources. I'm assuming that, I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is this is going out to the public. The public's gonna sit there and look at it and say, gee, are we paying our employees $140,000 with benefits?
Well, your math is still, you need to add the 7 plus the 6.7.
14 into 2 million is about 140,000, if my...
No.
This isn't all salaries and benefits.
That's what I'm trying to elicit. Are we paying them 140,000 with benefits, or is there something else in the budget there that is not...
Sorry, the M&amp;O isn't there, correct.
Okay, here's the salary.
Okay. Excellent.
Thank you, Steve.
There we go. Thank you.
What is the total overtime that the City of Newport Beach is proposing to pay next year, all departments?
That's a question for Dennis and Homer.
I'm sorry, listen.
What is the total overtime all departments, City of Newport Beach is budgeted for?
Yeah, if you look at your thin volume on page 17, we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 lines that are overtime, and that totals about...
So 5 million in overtime. Thank you.
That's correct.
Dave, remind me again what M&amp;O is, since it's all lumped in here.
Sorry, M&amp;O is maintenance and operations, which includes professionalized services or contracts.
Okay. It would include utilities, water, paper supplies, office supplies.
Harbor Resources, for instance, there's probably a $90,000 contract for Sheriff's Harbor Patrol to manage the moorings. And then there's, I think, $2 to $250,000 in there to continue processing our permits with the Coastal Commission, such as the RGP 54. So, but your question was a good one. We need to make that more clear. I'm sorry, Steve.
I just want, I don't want the public to think that we're paying folks $140,000 a year. That's all I was trying to elicit.
Any other questions?
As much as I'd like to, but we can't.
Any other questions on city manager? Can we have human resources next?
Barbara Ramsey, the HR Director, will provide HR review.
As outlined in the recent budget discussion that you had a couple of weeks ago, I believe Dennis told you that about 70% of our operating budget is salary and benefits. And we are the department that handles the salary and benefits and the employees' salary and benefits for the whole city. Sometimes you don't see us come before council very often because we're dealing with a lot of confidential issues. You'll see us more in closed session. We deal with grievances, disciplines, performance evaluations, things such as that. But we're the silent worker bees that help the departments get their employees. You talk about how much do we pay for overtime. If we can't fill those positions fast enough, then they're paying people overtime to get the job done. And what we do for departments, it directly affects the service to the public because if we can't get those front counter people, those plan check engineers, all the positions fast enough, then it does affect the, what, the service that we give to the public. So we're the silent worker bees, but we're working hard, and I kind of wanted to take this opportunity to let you know exactly what we do in human resources and what our budget is. So on slide one, our mission statement, I'm not gonna read it because it's a fairly long one, but basically, our goal is to increase the city's effectiveness through recruitment and retention of quality employees, and to recognize the value of each employee and develop a workforce capable of a high performance. And recruiting and retention has really become a challenge for us. And one of the reasons for that is we, our turnover rate is very high right now. We're having problems getting employees to come to Newport Beach. There's various reasons for that. When I start talking about our workload, I'm gonna show you how much our recruitments have increased. And we have got some increases in our budget this year just to take care of some of those increases. Some statistics for our workforce, as you've read in probably magazine articles and newspapers, all the baby boomers are retiring now and we're losing our workforce. And I did a little statistics of what our workforce looks like. And 32% of our employees are over the age of 50, which means they're getting close to retirement age. They're gonna be leaving. 70% of our management employees are over the age of 50, 41% over the age of 55. And just our department directors alone, we have 56% of them that are either retiring in the next year or are retirement age. So we have some real issues to deal with here at the city as far as recruiting employees. Now Newport Beach is, of course, a fabulous place. It's got a great reputation. But one of the issues that we're running into is people can't afford to live here, so they're commuting. The price of gas has gone up. People come here for the interviews, and I don't need to tell you this because I know we're talking in New City Hall, but it's, you know, they can't find a parking space, and then we take them in some little crowded room and do an interview, and they go, well, gee, maybe, you know, maybe I'll look at a place closer to where I live. So I think we're losing people, and we need to just kind of look at that whole issue. And that's what Homer and I are going to be talking about in the future. But anyway, our budget, let me see if I know how to work this. Oh, I did. I know how to do it on the computer. I wasn't sure about this. If you look at our budget, it's 1.650 proposed for '06-'07. That's about a 20% increase. And one of my slides will show you exactly what that 20% increase is. And it basically has to do with our recruiting and how it's increased so much that we just can't keep up with it. I'll tell you a little bit about what we do. Human resources, we have two divisions. We have the Administration/Operations Division. Gwen Buford is our Operations Manager, and Gwen couldn't be here today because she is over at the Police Department doing the promotional sergeant's exam with the Police Department. That's where our chief is also today. So we have 6.25 people staffed for that, that they're, we're the ones that do all the recruiting. As you see, I have half a director. We switched it this year in the budget, and half of my salary is now in this division, and half is in risk management, which is the other division. I'll put that slide up. In the Human Resources Operations, we have a Human Resources Manager, Gwen, a senior analyst. This Human Resource Analyst, .75, is a temporary person that we've had to bring in this year just to handle our part-time recruitments in recreation and library, maintenance aides. We have a lot of part-time recruitments. And so, and of course, we don't have a desk for this person because of our space, so she's able to work out of her home and kind of move, the library's actually given her desk over there to help work with them. So it's given the library some pretty good HR customer service. We have two Human Resource Specialists and a Department Assistant. We do the MOU administration. Every time you approve an MOU, the implementation of all the new benefits, we administer that. We do civil service board support, and as you know, sometimes those get pretty heavy and sometimes they don't. Employee/employer relations, we help with disciplines, performance evaluations, citywide training. We just rolled out the new citywide performance evaluation training this week. Recruitment and selection, classification and compensation, PERS/PARS assistance, employee and retiring counseling, grievances and disciplines, and there's a whole list of other things, but these are kind of, I kind of grouped them for you. In our risk management side, Lauren Farley is our Risk Manager. She's sitting here today. You see her quite often in closed session. She deals with a lot of the liability issues and the workers' compensation, disability benefits, retiring medical insurance, contract review, loss control. In Lauren's division, there's a Risk Manager, a Human Resources Analyst, and a Human Resources Specialist. My employees, they're great. They all help each other. Like the new MERP implementation, we've been doing that. So some people from Human Resources Administration help with that, and then some of Lauren's people have been helping us with some of our recruitment needs. So it's a busy time for us, but that's basically, in a nutshell, what we do. I did a little bit, I wanted to show you the service indicators so you could see. Recruitments of 88 this year that we're in now, we project up to 110, 64% increase in two years in the amount of recruitments. There are a lot of reasons for that. A lot of retirees, people go to other cities, somebody gets promoted, and then there's a domino effect. Tuition reimbursements, I believe in the new MOUs, we have more money going towards tuition reimbursements. More people are going to school. That's increased. We do all that paperwork. Personnel action forms, every time we have a new hire, a termination, any type of performance evaluation, any type of personnel action and address change, we are the ones that do that. So that has really increased tremendously. I think it's gonna be a lot higher than 1,500. Benefit forms, we do all the open enrollment, all the new benefits processing. Right now, because of the MERP implementation, we have, we've gotten to know our retirees a lot better. All 350 of them, they're calling us. And, you know, it's a very complicated system, and they have a lot of questions, so we have meetings set up for them. Part-time hires, that's the big one. It's gone up 200% in the last couple of years. And of course, they're, they don't stay. They're part-time, so that's a big increase in our workload. But as I said earlier, it affects the service that we give the public, so we need to get Our increases that we asked for, the first one is $120,000 for increased recruitments. Previously in the budget, recruitment was all over in our M&amp;O budget, like we had some in advertising, some in 80-80, some, it was just all over. And it's hard to get a handle on how much they actually cost. So I wanted to separate them out and have them in a special line item account, so we're gonna put the recruitments in that. We figured it's about $3,000 a recruitment, and it's just costly when we have a turnover. $25,000 for employment litigation. We haven't had any money budgeted for that before. We've, it's been over $50,000 this year so far, and we have a couple of attorneys working for us right now. So 25 is probably very low, but we at least wanted to put something in, and then we'll be able to budget future litigation, so we'll be able to tell exactly what that is costing us. And then we asked for the $54,712 for temporary, that's including benefits because she's a PERS member. This is someone who has been working with us this year just to help us catch up with our recruitment. So those are the additions that we've asked for, and that's, that's what I have to say about our department. I hope it helps you understand a little bit more what we do because I don't get to talk to you very often and come to council. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So you're asking for one, a portion of an additional person?
Yes, and I tell you, I would, I would take a full person anytime, but this person is great, and she only wants part-time. And we don't have a desk for her, so we're taking what we can get.
This is essentially a three-quarter time person?
It's a three-quarter time, part-time person that floats.
But it is somebody that we're using now.
We're using her now, and we just can't lose her. I mean, she's very valuable.
Does council have any questions of Ms. Ramsey? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is administrative services. Is that Mr. Danner?
That'd be me. I'll just go through these. I have about 10 slides. I'll go through them rather quickly. The first slide is our mission statement for the department, and as to provide the highest quality management information services, financial management, and a variety of support services for city officials, the public, and other departments. Awful lot of our customers, as you know, are internal. This slide compares the 2005-2006 budget with what we're requesting for 2006-7. You'll notice that there's approximately a $1 million increase in the total budget and an increase of three full-time employee positions. Those are not new employees. They're, they represent our parking meter supervisor and two workers that were formerly budgeted in Public Works. We're moving them to the Administrative Services Department. It just makes a lot more sense because they're out collecting money for us on a daily basis. They drop it off at our, in our vault. And so we decided about two months ago to transfer them to the Administrative Services Department. We did not adjust the 2005-6 budget because those were shown in Public Works, so it wasn't necessary. Some of the other increases, well, that, that transfer is about $300,000 of that shown increase. There's 250,000 approximately for salaries and benefits, and $50,000 for main... for salaries and benefits, and fifty thousand dollars for maintenance and operations, including all their automotive costs. The other significant increases in this budget this year is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars for copier purchases and one hundred thousand dollars in PC replacements. We pay for all the PC replacements around the city. And then there's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in negotiated salary increases, which we had no control over. So that makes up the bulk of the one million dollar increase. Quickly, the Division Information. We're made up of five divisions. First one's Resource Management, and there's staffing of three people. That's myself, Dick Kerth, and Tammy Frederickson. And we sort of do the administration for the department. We have a Fiscal Services Division, which is headed by Lois Thompson. They're responsible for those functions you see, including cash management, purchasing, warehousing, printing, all the postal services, reimbursement processing, accounts payable, and now, new this year is the Parking Meter Operations. We have a Outstanding Management Information Division. It includes computer applications, support, telecommunications, graphic information system, PC technical support, network management. There's an item on the agenda tonight concerning that. Then Database Management. And that, that's staffing of seventeen full-time employees and a student aide, headed by Pelmo Malcomus. Our Revenue Division is headed by Glenn Everode. They're responsible for municipal billings, all intergovernmental transfers, licenses, regulatory permits, revenue development, and receivables and collection. They also, when we have any special audits of our franchisees, they're responsible for that as well. That's twelve full-time employees and one point six full-time equivalents. And last but not least is our Accounting Division, headed up by Dan M. Matusevich. They're responsible for general accounting and payroll, property control and fixed asset tracking, all of our audit coordination. We have to have a annual audit every year, but we have many audits, including gas tax and bikeways and PERS and IRS. It's not just our financial statement audits. Responsible for all the debt administration of the city. We have probably close to twenty Assessment Districts now. That also includes any leases we have and the library certificates. And of course, financial reporting. We have a staff of eight with one point two five full-time equivalents. And we're always, always managed to be down staffing in this, at the professional level. We're always looking for, seems like we're always looking for accountants. We just recently lost our principal accountant and we're currently recruiting for that position. Other activities, these are things that don't seem to fit well in, in any department. So it's more or less what we consider non-departmental. Includes debt service administration. You can see we have Library COPs, Bellbough Marina Loan, Water Revenue Refunding Bonds, that's for the water project, some rolling stock leases, Section 108 loan, which is CDBG loan used for Bellbough Village. And we list a pre-annexation agreement with IRWD as, as debt service, just for lack of a better place to include it.
Dennis?
Yes, sir.
When will the Bellbough Marina Loan and the Water Revenue Refunding Bonds be paid
Just give me a second, I'll look that up before I get, I'll, I'll get that. It's included in the rap, I just have to find the right page. Significant revenue information that the Administrative Services Department is responsible for, seventeen point two million in water charges annually, three point two million in sewer fees, Fire Medic memberships, three hundred and twenty thousand. We receive that money even though the Fire Department's responsible for that program. We have recycling fees that are included on the Municipal Services Statement. Of course, franchise fees, three point six million, that includes cable franchises as well, Southern California Edison and Southern California Gas. Of course, use of money in property, that's our income property, seven, almost seven point three million dollars. Major fees and taxes that we administer within the department, of course, our largest revenue source for the city by category is property tax, and that's sixty-seven million dollars. Of that, about, I believe forty-seven is secure property taxes. We have sales tax of almost twenty-two million dollars, transient occupancy tax approaching ten million dollars, and then the business license tax generates three point three million dollars. And those are all pretty much accounted for in the Revenue Division. As you can see, these four items make up fifty-eight point six percent of the city's total estimated revenue of one hundred and seventy-four million dollars. Major charges and fines that we administer, our administrative fines and citations, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, parking citations, two and a half million dollars, alarm renewals, three hundred, and false alarms, three hundred and forty thousand, and then Thailand's billings of almost six million dollars. And there's many more. And that really concludes the presentation. It's, it's pretty much a status quo budget, except for the three individuals being transferred from another department. There's no new employees and really no new programs this year.
Questions from the council? Hold on for just a minute. Would you come on up to the microphone, I didn't hear what you said. Lois, would you like to, what was?
She wanted to know the answers to the questions. The Councilman's on the chance.
The Marina Loan is payable, paid off in two thousand sixteen and the Water Revenue Bonds in two thousand ten.
Okay, thank you. Fire Chief?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, Tim Riley, Fire Chief. I'm here to present my fourteenth budget I've presented before the City Council. And like some of the others, it's, has a lot of differences from the previous ones. Some we've administered in the past had dramatic decreases, and this one has what I would consider somewhat of a dramatic increase. I think as we go through this presentation, I'll have an opportunity to dialogue with you about what our recommendations are in this year's proposed budget, why we think they're important for the fire service and the service to the community. First thing we'd like to do is remind you, as you can find in the rap itself, the department's Mission Statement. And our mission is to reduce the loss of life and property from fire, medical, marine, and environmental emergencies through education, prevention, hazard reduction, and response. And all of the goals and objectives that we operate on a day-to-day basis and the guidance for all of our procedures and policies really stem to serve this particular mission. So it's important for us, we have it posted in all our fire stations, and we keep it at the forefront of what we do on a day-to-day basis. To give you just the big picture of our particular department budget compared to last year, you'll see that our total budget is now at twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty, no, twenty-eight million nine hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars, which is an eight point seven five percent increase from last year's budget. Of that, eighty-four percent of that, slightly over eighty-four percent, is for salaries and benefits at twenty-four million, which is up ten point one three percent. Our maintenance and operations costs are up fourteen point nine eight percent at four point three three five million. And our capital outlay is reduced from this year, from last year, by over fifty-seven percent, from four hundred and seventy-three thousand and change to hu, to two hundred and three thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars. To give you an example, we'll get into the salary a little bit later about why the increase, because it is for our proposed new positions. But to give you an example of some reasons why our MNO accounts have gone up, as all of us in this room tonight are experiencing, we in the Fire Department experiencing increases in fuel costs. And just in fuel costs alone, we estimated the increase in our budget of twenty-two thousand six hundred and eighty dollars from last year to this year to absorb additional fuel costs. And as you might imagine, fire engines aren't getting the greatest MPG these days. Additionally, we had a pretty dramatic increase in our overall general insurance budget, which is established by the Human Resources Department Risk Management Division and identified in our budget. Our general insurance costs went up ninety-eight thousand dollars. So just between those two categories, you can see that our budget jumped a little over a hundred thousand dollars alone, just in maintenance and operations costs. Our department is broken into six primary budget divisions in your budget book. And these are the budget divisions as follows. We have our Admin Budget, or what we call our Support Services Budget. And this budget provides for all of our Support Services activities for the rest of the department. Included in this are eight full-time positions and one full-time equivalent, which is actually two people who share a job on a part-time basis. This is where we provide the services out of the Office of the Fire Chief, all of our apparatus and equipment maintenance activities, our facility maintenance activities, our payroll, our accounting, our budgeting, and our acquisition of equipment and contracts to run the department. So really, this is the support part for all the things you see us do on a day-to-day basis out in our community. It's about five percent of our total budget is our total overhead. The next biggest, and the biggest category is our Fire Operations Budget. This is sixty-five point three percent of the entire budget at eighteen point nine million dollars. That consists of one hundred and fifteen full-time employees. And this accounts for all of the persons who are assigned to fire stations in our department, plus the Deputy Fire Chief's position. So this accounts for eight fire stations, which include eight fire engines, two fire trucks, three paramedic units, and one Battalion Chief Person every single day. The third division is our Fire Prevention Division. This is staffed by six full-time positions and is, represents four point two percent of our budget. The Fire Prevention Division is principally responsible for all of our fire code analysis and application in this community. That includes inspection of hazardous and special occupancies, such as hospitals, other institutional facilities, educational facilities, assembly facilities, high-rise residential and hotel facilities. Additionally, they're also responsible for the application of the fire code in the building plan check and inspection process. So they also have our specialty programs that you've heard about in the past year, such as our wildfire urban interface inspection programs out in the wildland area, our re-debatment and our hazard reduction plans, our fuel modification plans, and then also the recent adherence to the birthing regulations in the harbor of multiple births in a single pier. The third division is our EMS Administration Division. And this really just covers the oversight of our Emergency Medical Services Delivery Program. Our paramedics and firefighters and lifeguards who deliver our emergency medical services on a day-to-day basis are in other arenas. This is really principally for our two staff people that administer the Quality Assurance Program for our Emergency Medical Services, our training programs for Emergency Medical Services, and also the, the oversee our revenue generation component of EMS, our Fire Medics Membership Program, and our billing for paramedic-level services. Our fifth division is our Training and Education Division, and it is six point three percent of our budget. It has seven full-time positions and eight, and ten full-time equivalent positions. And you'll understand why there's such a high number for Training and Education when I list all the activities that are included in Training and Education. And these are all in the rap all the, also, so for you council members or the member of the public, you can actually look this information up.
Chief, I have a question for you on the training. With the new Fire Training Center at CNNA Heights Fire Station, I mean, how do you see our training in the future and in terms of the cost and all of that?
Absolutely. The Training Center that we have actually allows us to reduce some of our out-of-pocket expenses by having a local facility to work on. We currently budget approximately fifty thousand dollars a year to go rent out of city or out of jurisdiction places to do training. So if we go use Costa Mesa for a period of time, the Huntington Beach Tower for a period of time, the Orange County one for a period of time, it gives us, we have to pay rent for those uses. And those rent can vary anywhere from, you know, fifty dollars an hour for a classroom to, you know, six hundred dollars an hour to use the entire drill grounds if you're doing a multi-company drill. So if you had all your companies going down there on six different days, that runs up to about, you know, twenty-four hundred dollars a day, six different days, starting to add up money to rent. By having that new facility, we won't have to pay that rent. We'll have the ability to do it in our own backyard. It also saves on fuel costs because we're not traveling far away. It actually helps our responses because we're going to be in-town training instead of going outside of training. So there's a lot of things that you can't directly tie to the budget, but eventually you'll start seeing savings because training's local. And our Training and Education Division houses these different sections, and they're all listed separately in the budget, so you can really look at what each component costs. The first one is the Overall Training Management, which in that budget is our Fire Battalion Chief, Division Chief oversees the entire Education Division, and the Department Assistant that supports all these other activities. The second portion, or what we call twenty-three fifty-two, is the Lifeguard Training Activity. Part of that ten FTD is in our Lifeguard Cadet Program, which is a kind of feeder program for our Lifeguard Training Program. The third component of our Training and Education Division is a very popular Junior Lifeguard Training Program. Much of that ten FTE is found there in the annual number of seasonal people we bring back to be instructors in that program. We also have in that program our Community Education Program, which is one full, one full-time person who is principally responsible for going out and doing training in this community for our citizens on fire safety, beach safety, emergency medical services, disaster, not disaster preparedness, there used to be disaster preparedness, though you'll see in a minute, we have someone specially designed for that. Twenty-three fifty-five is our Emergency Preparedness Program, which has one person in it. This person is responsible for maintaining the city's emergency management plan, making sure all city personnel are trained and ready to respond in an event we had a large-scale emergency in our community, make sure that our EOC is functional, make sure that we're complying with all state and federal regulations for disaster preparedness and response. Our newest division, newest section in that division, is our Community Preparedness Division. And that's why it has an asterisk there. In January, the Council directed us to create a new program called Community Preparedness. We have just completed the testing process, the recruitment process, as Barbara Ramsey said. And after we get approval from the Civil Service Board, we'll be looking to hire that person on sometime next month.
Chief, as you know, that's a
Yes.
...important issue in the community. There's a lot of concern about the city's status of preparedness. And so it sounds like this, this person is going to be in position relatively shortly. And we can expect to see this person developing plans and strategies for improving community preparedness and early warning systems and that kind of thing.
Yeah, this person is principally designed to go out and educate the public on their role in the event an emergency occurs. So it's really a, a ground out to the very roots of our community, homeowners associations, service groups, individual neighborhoods, where they'll go out and they will teach people how to make sure that they're ready to respond, they know what to do should an emergency occur, how to prepare for themselves and their families should an emergency occur, how to help each other in the neighborhood should an emergency occur, as opposed to the Emergency Preparedness Person, whose real, real job is to look at our response plans. For example, we just had a couple weeks ago a tsunami evacuation drill. And that drill was just to look at, what's it going to take for us to notify, alert, and evacuate people from a specified area. That person is our Emergency Preparedness Coordinator that works on that. So we really have a two-pronged approach to disaster preparedness. Community education and training with our new position, and ongoing emergency preparedness for the city with our existing position. And then finally, our last division is our Lifeguard Operations Division. It counts for almost thirteen percent of our budget. We have fifteen full-time staff and twenty-one full-time equivalent. We're right in the process right now of bringing them all aboard because summer's just around the corner. Equates to roughly about a hundred and eighty people who work for us for about three months during the year. So it's a really important time for us because we have a lot of training, a lot of preparation, a lot of activity on the Lifeguard Arena during those three months of really hard-hitting action.
Tim?
Yes.
On, let's go back up to Fire Operations.
Yes.
That's in, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifteen full-time firepersons, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that number inclusive of overtime?
Yes.
And what, how much, what percentage of that is overtime?
I can't tell you percentage off the top of my head, but it's about two point three million is overtime to staff the entire Fire Operations Division.
And where does that overtime occur?
That occurs in principally three different areas. And I can direct you to the rap, I mean, the, where it's at. But if you go to twenty-three twenty, it's in the seven oh four oh series. And there's three principal areas. We have what's called We have what's called vacation relief, which what we do is we take the vacation that's estimated to occur during the course of the year. For all of our suppression personnel, we establish an hourly rate for each one of those hours and apply that. The second category is what we call uncontrolled. That's when we have people who call in sick, people who are injured on the job and are out on industrial accident leave, when people are out on bereavement leave, family medical leave, things that occur which keep people from coming to work that we really can't plan for or control. And then the final component, which is the smallest component, is what we call planned overtime. And I believe that's about sixty thousand dollars. And that's where we have identified areas or activities where we want people to do extra things, like special trainings we want them to go to, or special committees work on developing new training manuals or apparatus specifications, or to go get their additional education required to maintain their EMT certification or their paramedic certification. So those are the three main categories, and each category is spelled out specifically so you'll know how much we're spending on vacation relief, how much on uncontrolled, and how much on planned.
That's shown on page B one hundred.
And who schedules shifts? How is scheduling handled in the fire department?
Last year, if you recall, you authorized us to purchase a program called Telestaff, which is one of our specific computer applications that's really kind of industry unique. And the way that works is we have a system where people can submit a request for a vacation. And then based upon whether they're qualified people to work for them, they will either be given the opportunity to have that vacation day off or denied it. And so if we don't have anybody, like right now, we have quite a few vacancies because we're just finishing some recruitment and promotional tests. So there's been a lot of overtime in the rank of engineer because we have seven vacancies. So for an engineer to get a day off right now, he'd put in for it, but he may not get anybody to volunteer to work for him because there's so much uncontrolled overtime with people either on industrial accident leave or all these vacancies that we haven't been able to fill. So they put in for it, if someone volunteers to cover it and they're qualified, then they get the day off. When we have an uncontrolled vacancy, then we again look to see if anybody signed up to work in case an uncontrolled vacancy occurred. And if nobody signs up, then we call someone and say, "You are required to work." So we call, we call a mandatory. You're mandatory to come into work and fill this slot because our staffing is minimal staffing every single day, twenty-four hours a day. So we don't run short because we don't only have a way to do that because we are pretty much minimum staffing as it is today. So that's kind of the way it works, and it's all done by a computer. It's pretty slick.
Keith Curry.
Guess I'll send somebody to Curry.
Chief. Chief, in looking at the RAP on page seventeen, it looks like planned vacation is, or planned overtime for vacation relief is about five hundred thousand dollars. Uncontrolled is about a million four, or excuse me, uncontrolled is eight hundred thousand, vacation is about a million four, and vacation, and planned is about five hundred thousand. I guess question one is, will the proposed new positions help us reduce these amounts, number one? And number two, is there another strategy, I suppose, other than to address the fact that there's extensive overtime in the fire department, and how can we better manage that?
Well, these are the solutions that have been looked at in the past and what are looked at across the industry. And generally speaking, there's two ways, there's three ways to address the issue of vacancies. One is, don't fill them, run short. And we don't have the capability of doing that without shutting down a unit. And as you know, we have one fire unit in every station except for our truck companies, where we have one on the west side and one on the east side. So if we shut down a unit, we'd just be out of that resource to provide service on a daily basis. The other way is to fill it with what we call relief personnel. And generally, what other strategies have been is you hire additional bodies, and then they work kind of like on a floating crew. So you may have three extra people or four extra people per shift, and then if nobody calls in sick and nobody's on vacation, then you actually have four extra people. But that's a pretty rare occasion. So then what you would do is fill them into those vacation relief spots. Part of the problem with that is, for example, if you had four extra people per shift, one would probably have to be a captain, and one would have to be an engineer, one would have to be a paramedic, and one would have to be a firefighter. Well, if you had two engineers call in sick, then you could fill one, but you couldn't necessarily fill the other. Or if you had two paramedics, you'd have to call overtime for one of them, and then they have an extra person. So really, being able to balance those out becomes difficult. And then the third way is to fill with overtime. And depending upon the actual cost of benefits versus salary, in times past when benefits have been high, such as with high purse costs or high medical expenses, and the benefit package actually has gone over fifty percent of the cost of the salary, it's cheaper to hire overtime because now you're paying someone a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty percent, time and a half, to cover a shift, but a new person who had a higher benefit package may be getting their salary plus sixty percent benefits. So you did that analysis, and we did a pretty comprehensive analysis of that. I want to say it's been twelve years ago. We haven't, we did it twelve years ago, but we did it three years in a row. Just tie it to whenever Councilmember Hedges was on the council because he asked for it every year. And every single year, he didn't like to see it, but he agreed that if you look at the raw numbers, the dollar amounts, it was cheaper to do overtime at that time. So that's pretty much, and also by doing overtime, you're not trying to guess what stratus of employees you need to do vacation fill or relief, fill it in, because it's so transient, you know, you never know. Like right now, we have seven engineers that are out because we didn't have anybody qualified until we did some training and because of the big turnover that Barbara Ramsey was talking about. Tremendous turnover right now with the baby boomers. So even if you had three guys who were a relief crew and they were all engineers, you couldn't cover seven openings. So there's a lot of ways to look at it. This is the way we think works the best administratively, and it's the cost of filling that spot twenty-four seven.
Chief, I kind of cut off Councilmember Ridgeway in the middle of his question.
Yeah, I just wanted to stay on this overtime issue, and I do remember Mr. Hedges asking that, and clearly, it is cheaper to pay overtime. But my question has to do with, when you're doing your analysis of the total pay scale here, you have to know everybody's contract and the details of the, either firefighters and/or engineers, that type of thing. Correct me where I'm wrong, and I could be wrong, but I just need an understanding here. Apparently, on a firefighter, overtime doesn't kick in until they've done forty-seven hours.
It's fifty-three.
Okay, fifty-three. But help me, on a paramedic, it kicks in at forty hours.
All depends on, we're going to get to that later in detail, but the reason, now you brought it up. The Fair Labor Standard Act is the one that decides what thresholds you have to pay overtime. The fire service lobbied long and hard to get a higher threshold for firefighter personnel, which is called a seven K exemption. So it pretty much says that instead of paying overtime after forty hours a week, by the nature of the type of schedule we work, we can pay overtime only after they've reached the threshold of fifty-three hours a week, as long as they're firefighter personnel. Well, throughout across the country, not everybody provides paramedic services the same. So in some cases, paramedics have to be compensated at forty hours a week if they're not doing firefighting work. In our organization, our people are dual role. They do firefighting and they're paramedics. They're cross-trained to do both things. And as long as we are keeping that healthy, that they're doing both, not just only paramedics, but they're doing firefighting, which means they're showing up and participating in firefighting activities, they're participating in fire training activities, they're demonstrating that they're doing dual role, then we can hold them to that higher threshold of fifty-three hours. If we fail to do that, which is something we'll talk about in a minute, there's a court case, a recent one, that talks about the failure to demonstrate that in L.A. City, and I think it's going to cost them about five point six million dollars.
Well, so all our paramedics are cross-trained to be firemen, and so the threshold is much higher.
That's correct.
So we have no pure paramedic.
No pure forty-hour-week employees on the operations side. Now, all of our people who are not in operations, our inspectors and our, they're all at forty-hour overtime as the law requires because they haven't, they're not engaged in firefighting activities, even if they're trained. Because we have some people like myself, Ron Sutherland, Craig Chastain, Pete Hadley, who does our support services work, all our fire prevention staff, they are trained as firefighters. But the nature of their work on a day-to-day basis, they're not engaged in firefighting, and so therefore, their threshold's at forty. Mine's not, of course, I don't get overtime, but their threshold's at forty because they're not engaged in it on a day-to-day basis.
How many of those personnel are there that are at a forty-hour threshold?
Well, there's a hundred and fifteen here, and we have a total of a hundred and forty-five, a hundred and forty-five employees, so thirty. Well, plus the management people, so twenty-eight maybe.
And, but how many of those people generate the overtime that's paid, those thirty people?
Very little. For example, if you look at all the other budget divisions, except for lifeguard operations generates a little bit higher amount because it's the same issue with the full-time people, particularly in the summertime, we have to have a certain number there to provide the supervision on the beaches. But if you look at all the other divisions, such as the admin division, fire prevention division, minuscule amounts. And usually, like in fire prevention, if they're working overtime in fire prevention, it's because somebody asks for a special night inspection or an over weekend inspection or plan check, and they're paying a fee to offset that cost.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, we interrupted you in the middle.
It's all right, it's a good conversation. So lifeguard operations, we've talked about that. That really reflects what we do year-round to protect our beaches. Revenue generation. Our paramedic program is our number-one revenue generator in the, in our department. About one point seven million of that is our direct billing. So that's where we bill someone for services, or we bill their third-party insurance, or we seek reimbursement for Medicare or Medi-Cal for paramedic services rendered or transportation services. Three hundred and twenty thousand is our projection for our paramedic membership program, which gives city residents or businesses an opportunity to get no cost to themselves if they use our services. Junior lifeguard fees offsets the program. Public safety augmentation fund or Prop 172 fund, that's the amount the city receives from Prop 172. Fire and police split it. And so four hundred thousand we get, four hundred thousand the police get to fund some of our services. Fire prevention fees and fines. This is anything dealing with code enforcement in the fire department, plan check services, inspection services, fines for parking in front of a fire hydrant, anything to deal with the fire code. This is the revenue that's generated out of that particular account. Significant program issues. I don't know what happened with that first one. There it is. Number one issue for us this year is professional competency. And really, that boils down to what Ms. Ramsey said. Tremendous turnover in our organization right now in our management and supervisory ranks. We have a lot of new firefighters coming in that aren't going to have a lot of the old-timers around to share some of their experience. So this is a real focus for us. We're experiencing a changing management team with my retirement and a couple others this year. So we're really going to focus on making sure that what we're doing at the street level, the fire engines go out the door, and the paramedic ambulance shows up, and the lifeguards on the beach, that we are delivering those services and our core competencies are being met. That's why we're really excited about the new training center in Santa Ana Heights because that gives us an opportunity to have a place where we can go and exercise some of those basic core competencies over and over again, which is necessary for new employees. We're going to continue to emphasize our emergency preparedness in this city. As we just talked about, our new community preparedness program is going to, we're going to have somebody onboard, hopefully, July first. And by the end of this calendar year, you should be seeing things in the streets, in your neighborhoods, of making sure people are getting the good message on community preparedness. Our hazard mitigation plan is one of the budget additions this year. This is for us to hire a consultant to come in and take what we did a couple of years ago, what's called the hazard analysis for the city. In other words, what are all the things that could happen to the city in a disaster realm? And this gives us an idea of what are some of the things we could do today to mitigate the effects of those particular disasters. So this was a special plan that was put, a special dollar amount that was put in just for this. And then finally, one of our emphasises at the city level is hazard-specific action plans. And I spoke to the tsunami drill we had the other day. That was the first time where we were able to take our large emergency management plan and now boil it down to a specific threat, specific incident, that had clear direction for all of the players in the EOC of what needed to take place to affect proper notification and warning of residents and evacuation. So we're starting to head now and drill down into hazard-specific action plans, which I think is really what people really want to see, not just overall preparedness, but individual preparedness for every single potential likelihood.
Chief, if I could, in that regard, on the basis of the drill that you just concluded, are you confident that the city is equipped to respond to those types of emergencies should they occur, or are there other things that we should be doing to better equip ourselves to respond in the future?
Well, as far as equipping the department or even the other responders, I think that we're pretty well-equipped. Obviously, by nature of the definition of disaster, it's an event that overwhelms the ability of the local resources to handle it. So by the nature of the definition, we're never going to be totally ready. That's why it's really important for us to rely on outside resources for assistance. We have excellent automatic aid and mutual aid agreements across our jurisdictional boundaries with everybody in the county. We've been a longtime participant in the California Master Mutual Aid Plan, where we're really going to see a lot of resources. A prime example of that was in the nineteen ninety-three Laguna fire. Every single Newport Beach engine was outside of the city limits of Newport Beach fighting fires. And so it was our staff and rigs from L.A. City making a stand at Newport Coast Road. If it wasn't for that, and there was additional four hundred fire engines in Laguna. If it wasn't for that type of activity, we wouldn't be able to have the resources. There are some things that we've evaluated we need to take a harsh look at to see if that's what works for the city. What's the best way to notify our residents? Should we do a fire-in system? Tonight on the agenda, we're buying a new program that does a callback system. We're going to see if that is the solution we need to notify people or notify specific parts of people to respond a certain way during a disaster. So we're always looking for ways to do things. I think in our current state of our budget, I think we're pretty well-established right now. But if there's something big that you need to hear about, we'll be back to tell you about it. I think it's pretty, I think our disaster program is as good as any, you know. Now, what's the utopia? It's hard to say. Obviously, for us, a big issue for us is our long-term facility needs. We have two fire stations right now that are pretty urgent need of replacement, plus lifeguard headquarters. We have the new Santa Ana Heights Fire Station that's going to begin construction in a little bit. We need to look at an extended plan, long-range, for the replacement of two other fire stations. And we need to take a look at the service demand, and as it grows down in the Crystal Cove area, uphill from Crystal Heights, to see when that demand is actually going to start, taxing our resources such a way where it has a dramatic impact on the community. You know, I wouldn't imagine that that probably won't be until we get a lot of occupancy, a lot of build-out, and a lot of population. And then depending upon how the rest of the city is being impacted, it's resource-wise, when we're really going to need it, looking at putting some sort of additional facility down there for response and redundancy.
Chief, question for you on response times. I know when I carpooled with Battalion Chief Sutherland to the fire training day, he shared with me some of the response times in the Crystal Cove area, and then I see some new grading on Newport Coast. And gosh, it would seem like a long ways for those trucks to meander in there. Can you comment on response times in the city and then that kind of Newport Coast, Crystal Cove area?
You bet. Our response goal is to try to reach every part of the city within five minutes or less ninety percent of the time. And there are parts of the city that are going to be reaches by geography. For example, Newport Terrace way up on Nineteenth. We can't get there in five minutes, but Costa Mesa can get there in seven minutes. And so they're the next best solution. We're never going to craft a solution that's going to solve that from a Newport Beach response because it's very remote, it's very costly to do that. We think we've got a reasonable solution in place. Right now, because of the nature of the way the fire stations were built in Newport Beach, the port streets don't have great response. Part of that is because their geographic remoteness, part of that is the configuration of the streets, and by virtue of the location away from fire stations, they don't have a great response. Newport Coast right now has a pretty good response, except for everything Crystal Heights going up. For example, our closest station right now to Crystal Heights, the intersection of Crystal Heights and PCH, is the Corona Del Mar Fire Station, not the Newport Coast Fire Station. And it takes them five minutes just to get to that intersection, if they're in quarters. So eventually, when you have all these places being built up there, now the newer construction techniques, a lot of them have fire sprinklers, they have good communities, affluent communities, they have good health care, we don't imagine there's going to be a lot of demand, but there will be extended response times. I'd not be surprised that a typical response to the upper reaches of that is going to be ten minutes or longer. So that's going to be a service issue that the council will have to look at when we start seeing that become more prevalent. Right now, it's not an issue because it's one or two a year. But it is something we'll have to take a look at down the road. All right, new positions. The fire department has requested seven new positions, and in this budget, we have four new positions that the city manager has presented for you. The first is a new information and communications coordinator position. This is a hundred and fourteen thousand dollar increase. This is a $114,000 increase in our budget, $95,745 in salaries and benefits, $6,000 on change for ongoing maintenance operations and $12,450 for startup costs to get this position up and running. We also asked for three firefighter paramedics at, I'm going to get the new slide in, didn't I? I don't know what happened. This is actually $456,000 in total cost, not $400,000 in cost. In reviewing that, we found out that the overtime we just got through talking about wasn't included in there. So this is actually $456,350 is the actual amount for the three firefighter paramedic positions. Now I want to take you through each of them kind of step-by-step so you understand why we felt it was essential this time in our budget that we wanted to make this presentation. The first is the information and communications coordinator. We have been asking for a department-specific information person for about the past five years and it never really rose to the top because of other competing budget demands. And it's something that we felt has been important since way, way back when because of the continued proliferation of what we call our special department applications. And the MIS report that Dennis talked about, the administrative, in the admin services department, the MIS division, they do a great job on managing overall, over-department, over-reaching things such as citywide applications, network management, technical support, PC support, maintenance, and we are still expecting to rely on them to provide that level of service for our department. But this position is really targeted about our unique department-specific applications. For example, we have specific department-related software that we use for doing our incident reporting system, which is our record for all of our incidents and our reports to the state and federal incident reporting system, the, also the system we utilize to provide a documentation to the user of our service or through subpoena. This is the way we capture what happens on our incidents. Our fire prevention inspection records, this is where we keep track of the occupancies in our city, the hazards that are associated with them, the types of permits they're required to have and whether they have fire code violations, whether they've taken care of them in a timely fashion. Our fire training record system is where we track all of the training and education that's required and desired in our organization and it's a long list. If you just get past the federal OSHA requirements, the requirements for state OSHA, the requirements for complying with the federal disaster preparedness requests, there's that alone, let alone the things that we want to make sure our people are prepared and ready to do. Our FireView incident analysis software, this is a specialized software that lets us use a geographic information system to track responses, give predictions on response time. If we were to put in a fire station in Crystal Cove, what would be the predicted response that we could get out of it from that station and other stations? So it's a great modeling program. Our tele-staffing and payroll software, not only does our tele-staff system, we utilize that to fill our positions, but we also use it to feed the city's payroll system with our unique payroll issues of how many hours does someone work in a 56-hour work week? We, like the police department, have mobile data computers that we utilize to talk back and forth with our dispatch center, also our mobile mapping solutions where we can keep track of our maps and our responses. And then finally, we have specialized software utilized to capture all the data necessary for feeding our EMS medical billing system. In addition to our special applications, this person would be needing to coordinate with a lot of different agencies. First off, our dispatching center, Metronet, is located in Anaheim. It's got seven agencies that utilize that for its fire dispatching services. There's a lot of communication, both voice, radio and data, that we interact with them on a, on a minute-by-minute basis. So having someone to be the liaison with that department is key. And right now, we have a fire captain who works a, you know, a regular fire schedule out in the fire station that does that for us. So he's either here 10 days a month or 14 days a month or he's not here. So it's not someone that's, that, he's good, but he's not that reliable. City MIS division, we interact with them on all of our daily support and networking issues. Orange County Communications for our mobile networks, numerous hardware and software vendors, and we have over 300 interdepartmental users that work on our systems. So we really feel that it is time to, to look at getting a position to, to do this for us. Historically, we've used fire personnel who've created kind of specialty training for themselves to look at these things for us. Battalion Chief Nick Waite, who has retired about six years ago, actually wrote a lot of those programs for us before we bought off-the-shelf solutions. We bought off-the-shelf solutions because he was retiring. Deputy Chief Ron Sutherland is our guru in a lot of those. He's planning on retiring at the end of the year. We have a fire captain that does a little bit of programming for us. He's going to retire in two years. So all this developed expertise we've used to patch all these holes in the dike is going away for us. We need to have somebody now that is knowledgeable, trained, educated and reliable to start taking care of our information and our data needs, not only on our interdepartmental needs, but our response needs as well. The firefighter paramedic positions. Originally, when I made this proposal to the city manager, I asked for six positions. That would be two per shift, we have three shifts, one for each of our two ladder truck positions. In discussions with the city manager and looking at the overall budget, the city manager came back in one of our meetings after that and said, you know, what if we did three this time? How would that be? I said, gets us halfway there, halfway where we need to be. So I, I'm excited that we got three positions in the budget this year and I hope that you're going to support us in that because I think it's the right time to do this. Why are we asking for three firefighter paramedic positions? Well, we talked a little bit about them, but I'm going to apply them in this role now in some of the things. First off, minimum effective staffing at truck companies, three people versus four people. There have been numerous, numerous, numerous studies that look at the effectiveness of companies at a unit and multiple companies at the scene of a fire to determine how to effectively respond to fire incidents. And the, and the bread and butter fire, the cookie cutter fire, we call it, our basic fire is the single-family dwelling fire, which is principally what we have in our, in our city. Sometimes we have dual family with duplexes and occasionally we'll have apartment house fire like at Oakwood, but principally what we normally have is a single-family dwelling fire. And the idea is to get a certain number of people on the scene in a certain period of time to effectively manage that incident before it gets out of control. There's a national standard that was developed and adopted by the National Fire Protection Association that really calls out what the minimums are for effective firefighting response. And while we as a city do not meet those standards, nor are we really holding that up as the standard that we should always meet because it's pretty high, there are a lot of good things in there that help us identify what we should do and I'll take you through why it looks that way in a minute. But one of the things NFPA talks about is we should be able to get the first unit of a firefighting team on the scene within four minutes 90% of the time. And then the remainder of a full assignment, or what they call effective fire response, within eight minutes. And a measure of that is with eight minutes is to have all these people on scene to perform duties and the ability to flow 400 gallons per minute for 30 minutes immediately at that time, within that first eight minutes. So that's kind of the standard we utilize when we're trying to examine how well we can meet effective firefighting staffing. Another reason that we want to take a look at this is this is where we used to be. We used to have four people on each of our truck companies. Now, we've always had three people on our engine companies and I'm not proposing that we take all of our engine companies to four persons. I don't think it's practical for our city. I think that the level of service we provide in this city with three people is satisfactory. I think we do a good job. And adding three people for every one of our, three to four people for all of our engines would be an increase of another 24 positions and it'd be a whole lot more than what we're talking about today. But prior to Prop 13 being passed and in 1989, and as a result of Prop 13, there was a lot of budget cuts in the city. And one of the first casualties was we took one of the four people off of one of our two trucks. So the truck company that's located over here at City Hall went down to three people and the truck company at Fashion Island remained at four people. And it stayed that way up until the mid-'90s. And during the mid-'90s, if you'll recall, or you may not recall, there was this thing they called the E-RAF shift. And that's when the governor proposed a budget and he passed it that said that we're going to take money from local governments and we're going to shift it and augment education over here. And for a series of years, which Dennis always calls as the raid on our coffers, they took money away. And during those times, one of the things we looked at was to come, become creative. And the way we became creative is we went into the ambulance transport business. And we created a paramedic transport company by hiring three firefighters and taking three off the remaining truck company. So we now took our other truck company down to three people, but we added another paramedic unit to provide better emergency medical services to the city. The association, we met and conferred on that with the association because it was a change in working conditions, there was a change in the safety standard. We met and conferred with them and they agreed to support this when we decided to do that and we had that reflected in their memorandum of understanding. And they really agreed to do this for a couple reasons. One, we still kept the people around, so we weren't getting rid of people. And we said that we would take that extra paramedic unit and anytime we went on a fire, once they arrived on the scene of a fire, we would assign them to the truck company. So now instead of the truck company having three people, you'd have three people plus a paramedic unit, that would make five people for all of our truck company operations. So we actually got higher than a four-person truck. Well, that worked fine until we just got too busy. And the actual fact is our paramedics are so busy, most times they're not arriving within that eight-minute or 10-minute period to effectively supplement the truck company operation to make it effective. And so if you look at, you have an opportunity to look at the MOU, it clearly states that we all agree that three people should be on an engine, four people should be on a truck. We agreed that we would supplement our paramedic program by removing that staffing, but if that paramedic program ever went away, those six positions would go back on the truck. So in all intents and purposes, we've kind of already agreed that we should have four people in the truck. It's just not working the way we tried to make it work in a very creative way, in a very cost-savings way, but it's not giving us the desired staffing that we need. Additionally, when you look around the rest of the, the rest of the county to kind of compare what our neighbors are doing, you'll see that we have 12 fire departments in this county. In that county, and the majority of the cities are covered by the Orange County Fire Authority. Of those 12 fire departments, every single one but three has four-person staffing on their trucks. And the only three that do not are Brea, which actually has the same proposal in their budget this year to try to bump theirs back up to four, Garden Grove, which uses the same thing we talk about, the add the paramedic to the truck thing, and Santa Ana, we're not really sure what they do, but they only have three people as well. So all other truck companies operate with four-person staffing because of the type of work they do and the, the nature of what they do and when they need to do it is so critical. Now, if you'll indulge me just a little bit, I want to take you through a little bit about this effective staffing issue and why it's important. And then we'll return and talk about some of the other key components of my proposal, which are, let's go over through, through them real quick. First off, we're going to increase our daily staffing level. Right now, we have 37 suppression personnel on duty every day. By adding what we have in the budget today, they'll take it to 38. If we add the other one someday in the future, they'll take it to 39. So that increases our daily staff, which I think is important on a day-to-day basis, but also would be very important in the event we ever had a disaster of any magnitude. To maintain firefighter paramedic competency in dual roles, and this rolls right into that 7K exemption issue we talked about. If you look at that Cleveland versus Los Angeles decision, they really talked about and hammered on the, the words engaged in fire protection activities. And they really looked at that in the LA City case with such that they hired them as dual-role paramedics, they paid them as dual-role paramedics, their initial training was as firefighter paramedics, but if you looked at their day-to-day operations, even on fires, they did not fight fire, they did not train with the fire companies, they did not participate in firefighting activities. So they lost the court case. And right now, the dual-role paramedics in the Los Angeles city are considered non-7K exemption employees and have to get overtime after 40 hours. So in essence, the higher cost of keeping them as firefighter paramedics is no longer an asset, but a liability. And the reason is they didn't maintain that competency, nor did they maintain their activity in that regard. Part of the reason we're asking for three paramedic positions to go on the truck instead of just three firefighters is it gives us an opportunity to rotate our firefighters into a non, um, rotate our paramedics off of a paramedic unit onto a firefighting unit so they can train and respond as firefighters and participate in firefighting activities like once every three months would be the rotation. So, and actually right now, it'd be once every six months because we only got half the number of positions that we were looking for.
And Tim, if I can just interrupt you, what I hear you saying is that in Los Angeles and also here, the paramedics were so busy that they couldn't spare them really the time to train them as firefighters or allow them to be firefighters.
That, that's what happened in Los Angeles. Here, we're still making a valiant effort to keep them involved in firefighting activities and get them training, but paramedics are the busiest units in the city. And if both of our paramedic units are tied up and we hear another paramedic call and they're tied up in the training activity, we're either going to wait for Costa Mesa to come in or we're going to kick them loose to respond. And most of the time, we kick them loose to respond. So, and if they're tied up, if we have three paramedic units in the city and let's say that the City Hall one and the Fashion Island one are tied up and we get a fire here in West Newport, well, the next paramedic unit is responding from Corona Del Mar. He's not going to get here within the allotted eight minutes to supplement the truck company. So even if they're available to respond, they may be too distant to meet the standard we're shooting for. So, but one of the things, we're really looking at trying to stay true to when we put them into a training activity, not to extract them out just to try to meet this test on a good-faith effort. Now, it happens that we're going to pull them out if we think it's a desirable service reason to do that. But good faith, we're trying to keep that dual role intact because I think it serves the city better in the long run. So those are the reasons.
Excuse me a minute, Chief. You got about 10 minutes.
All right. Well, let me go real quickly through this little primer for you, just to show you why I talk about the staffing issues. And then we'll, real, real, real basic, we operate four different types of equipment in the field, a command car, a fire engine, which carries hose and water, a fire truck, which does not carry hose and water, but carries a lot of complement of equipment. It's kind of a rolling toolbox, carries all of our rescue equipment, all our forcible entry equipment, our ventilation equipment, the stuff we use for heavy rescues, like the car that was dangling over the cliff a while back or lifting up the cement truck when it rolled over in Newport Coast, and then of course, our paramedic ambulances. Okay, engine company has one captain, one engineer, one firefighter. There's one for each one of our stations. They carry hose water and are equipped with a pump. They are usually the first arriving unit for all of our fires and our medical aides. Okay? And they deploy hoses, they hook up the hydrants, they conduct initial fire attack and they do search and rescue. A truck company has one captain, one engineer, firefighter. We're asking to add a fourth position. Okay? They have one here at City Hall, one at Fashion Island. That's all the trucks we have. They have a 100-foot aerial ladder on them and they carry 172 feet of ground ladders to ladder different buildings. They have a huge inventory of special tools and equipment. They perform forcible entry on locked or hard-to-get-in-to places. They ventilate hot gases and smoke out of fires. They carry in-position ladders for work aloft, whether it's for hose lines or ventilation. They control the utilities to make sure residents or the firefighters aren't injured by natural gas, electricity, water, provide work lighting, they perform salvage and overhaul work, they do special rescue and extrication, they do a lot of things on the scene of a fire. Paramedic company operations, we have two of them on each one, two paramedics in each paramedic company, one here, one Fashion Island, one Corona Del Mar. They don't have firefighting capability other than their training. They're assigned to the truck company when they're available, but as I mentioned earlier, we're having a hard time meeting that goal. They provide medical care for fire, fire victims, they provide rehab and medical care for fire personnel. We also want to get them engaged in firefighting activities. Resource needs, this is what we're talking about when we're saying, these are the things that we need within the first eight minutes to be effective on the fire ground. We need one person to establish command and control all the resources. We need two people to establish the water supply. And as I stated, the standard in NFPA is 400 gallons per minute for 30 minutes. And that's roughly two hand lines, two firefighting lines on your basic fire. You need three people to establish one attack hose line. Okay? So a commander and two firefighters. You need one person to establish a backups, I mean, two people to establish a backup line or an exposure line. An exposure line is where you put water on another area you don't want to catch on fire, so you keep it from catching on fire while somebody else is trying to put out the main fire, like the house next door. We have to have a search and rescue team on all incidents where we're not sure. By law, we, I mean, we have to have a ventilation team where we can get the hot smoking gases out so we can affect an entry and maybe make it tenable for our firefighters or any victims. We have to have what's called a mandatory rapid intervention crew or someone who is deployed and ready to go in and rescue the rescuers should something go down. And that is an OSHA requirement. is an OSHA requirement. We have to have that on scene. We didn't used to have to have that. And then finally, if you're going to deploy the aerial ladder, you have to have an operator special for that. So there's 15 bodies in the first eight minutes to perform the most basic functions on a regular fire ground. Now, if you look at what we have, this is what we get in a first alarm assignment. Three engines, two trucks, one paramedic unit, one battalion chief. Within eight minutes, we get two engines with six people, one ladder truck with three people, one paramedic with two people, one battalion chief with one person, which is 12 people. We don't meet our 15-person threshold with our first alarm. And we're talking about, in this area, two engines would be the Balboa Peninsula Station, the Lido Station, the Lido Fire Truck, the Lido Paramedic Unit, and the Battalion Chief from Fashion Island, if they're all available. Okay? What we have to do then is strike some additional resources to help us meet that, and we think we might be able to get this within 15 minutes, which is add an additional engine, which gives us three more people. Well, if we did that here, the next closest engine for us is the, either the Balboa Island or the Mariners engine down here. So you can see that it's pretty tough making that eight minutes, and we're pushing the 15-minute limit. If we added another ladder truck, we'd get three more people, but where's that other ladder truck coming from? Fashion Island. Okay? Add, we have a paramedic unit assigned, a battalion chief assigned. So that gives you an idea of the things that we have to try to do to get the proper number of personnel on the scene to affect just a basic initial attack on a fire. So when you think about all those things we talked about truck companies doing, when you have four people on a truck, that's literally two two-man teams. And you could tackle ventilation and search and rescue with the same piece of equipment, ventilation and utilities control with the same piece of equipment. Salvage operations, which we don't get a chance to do often enough where we try to go in and protect damage from smoke and water products. So there's a lot of things we could do if we had that extra body that adds that continuity purpose, that extra company, and provide a place to allow our firefighter paramedics to maintain their level of competency in their role as a firefighter. And that is the end of my presentation. And I know it took long, but I think this is a real important subject as I think this is the first time we've had an opportunity in this city since I've been here to really address this issue financially.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions? After all that, we don't have any questions?
I have one. Tim, with the increase in employees that you're requesting, is there any need or demand for increased equipment?
Only in the proposal, we had an increase for $28,000 for startup costs, and that $28,000 would cover their personal protective equipment, which is their firefighting ensemble, their helmet, their boots, the breathing apparatus they have to wear. So all the things, there's obviously a seat on the truck for them, so we don't have to add any new trucks or anything, but it provides for their personal protective equipment in this proposal. And once we have that, then it would just be ongoing maintenance, which is included as well.
No additional fire engines?
No, sir.
Anybody else? Okay?
Thank you very much.
As I look through, it looks like we have roughly 11 departments to go. And three minutes.
We have public comments.
And we need to have public comments. What is your proposal? Should we have our next study session start at two or three?
I think it would be good to have the next study session start at three, and I think if we do that, we should be able to get through the remaining departments in three hours.
Now, is the capital improvement program also going to be discussed in more detail, or are we finished with that?
We'll discuss it in whatever detail you want, but I think we addressed the questions at the end of last meeting, but if there's some particular projects that you would like to review, we will do that again.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the council related to, do you really think you're going to be able to get the, remember we got the police department, which is another.
Yes, I think this, our presentation is the longest presentation that you will be hearing, just because we're adding four of the 11 positions in this department, and there needed to be, the justification needed to be laid for why that request is being made.
Okay. Does the council, and you think you can do it in the three hours instead of two?
Yes.
What's the pleasure of the council? Does that sound reasonable?
Well, it's pay me now or pay me later. I mean, we might as well, we're going to have to have an extra night, so you might as well just schedule three o'clock.
All right.
I don't see a choice here.
Okay, now, I'd like to open it to public comments.
I want to thank the fire chief for such a great presentation. I also want to hopefully have all of you keep in mind that our response time in the city of Newport Beach, $120 million budget, one of the best places in the world to live, and I would hope that you would start to build a couple of new fire stations sooner than later, since we have $14 million available to do that with. That's right in some, oh, some type of a facility budget. I also feel, in some ways, I've been one that's been coming up for years and years and years, and Fire Chief Riley, who's going to be leaving in November, I will sorely and sadly miss you. And he knows that we've fought some good battles over the years, won over paramedics with John Hedges years ago, and I respect him immensely, and so I feel that if he thinks that we need six people, I think you should honestly start to look at whether or not we really need six people or three people, since we're always told we're supposed to listen to the leaders and listen to the people that are in charge on these issues. And so I would like some more consideration looked at as to whether or not we need to get the six people or the three people, and now this is one that Fire Chief Tim isn't going to really like. The new ambulances that we have, those big giant trucks that look like the old-fashioned milk trucks from years ago, I'm concerned, and rightfully so, to make sure that, do they really fit on all the streets, on all the alleyways, because those are the paramedic units. And so if that means that we have to have two types of units, which I don't know how you would do that because you have to deploy one one place in an emergency, and so if we don't have the right size unit to get down some of our streets, that needs to be something that we need to look at also. And observation, perhaps you could take item number one, which is clarification of the consent calendar, and put it at the end of these meetings so that there is more time for discussion and you don't run out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else in the public that would like to comment? Seeing none, then we will adjourn to the closed session. I will adjourn the study session until three o'clock on June the 13th.